I call the planning commission meeting for March 26, 2020 to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ed, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Cicero. Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Haddon.
Here.
Mr. Perkovich.
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Here.
Mr. Snow.
Excused. I'll entertain a motion to approve of the minutes from the regular meeting dated March 5, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Ed, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Abstain.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
And Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
And before we get started, Ken, do you have a few words you want to say?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And we find ourselves in some unusual days right now. And so, as you can see by the layout of this room, this is how we have been conducting public meetings since some of the heightened concerns were raised and some of the safeguards were implemented for public health. This room is set up in a way to provide that safe personal space as much as possible, and we've been using this, as I said, for city council meetings. We've had a few folks weigh in recently about wondering, why are we conducting a public meeting right now? Well, the answer to that is the public business doesn't stop. The very fact that the governor's orders are an act of a public action. We've had council meetings in every community and other legislative meetings, congresses meeting, the state legislators meeting, we're meeting, you're meeting here tonight. We're required by law to do that. We, yesterday, the state legislature amended some law which everyone in Ohio was hoping would have happened sooner, but it didn't, and it certainly didn't happen in time for this meeting. So you may be sitting on the last live meeting for quite some time until some of these restrictions in our communities and state and the nation are lifted. After today, I suspect most of our meetings will be set up. In fact, plans are already in place for virtual meetings to be held. What I will point out is that what is in place now and has always been in place and will always be in place is the opportunity for residents or interested parties to weigh in. In whatever manner they choose, we invite people to provide emails to, in this case, commission members or members of council. Those are always provided to the members of boards and commissions and council members, and they all get them and they all read them. I don't know, I can't tell you exactly tonight what type of format we will follow in terms of providing public participation in a virtual concept, but it will be there. There will be some sort of participation allowance. So tonight, we have an occupancy limit, temporary limit in this room of 41 people. I can't tell, looking behind me, it looks like we haven't met that yet, but there are seats set up in the second floor of this building in a large conference room, which allows for another 21 persons if, in fact, it overflows. There's a video link set up for people to be able to hear exactly what's going on in here in real time, and there's two-way communication there. So anyone who wishes to provide comment to you during this meeting can stand at a podium at a safe distance without having to touch any surfaces or any microphones, and you'll be able to hear them. And at the discretion of the chairman, you can have them be heard. So if this seems unusual, let me just say that public meetings do not violate any executive order by the governor. They are being conducted all over the state of Ohio and every other state, and they will continue to do so. We, the governor, does not have the authority to prohibit a public meeting, only the legislature does. And to modify the existing public meetings law that was done yesterday was not done in time for this meeting because it requires, at a minimum, a 24-hour notice period. So going forward, we may not be gathering like this. As much as it is nice to see all of you, we might be seeing you virtually going forward, but one thing we can assure the public is that the business will continue and that they will have an opportunity to be heard. Most of the comments that we have heard have been with respect to the Glenbrook item that's on your agenda, which I know that the committee is, the commission is considering hearing first. I remind those who are here today in the public that regardless of what happens at the planning commission tonight, it still has to go before the city council, and there will be plenty of opportunity for this item, for their comments and their concerns to be heard prior to final adoption, if, in fact, it ever, if it is adopted. So happy to answer any questions that may come up along the way, but otherwise, I wish you well tonight.
Thank you. So with that, we have five public hearings tonight, and the format that we're going to follow is that we'll give the applicant an opportunity to tell us what he or she wants to do at a particular location, and then those looking to speak in favor are given an opportunity to voice their opinion. And then, in turn, we will give those looking to speak against the issue an opportunity to voice their opinion as well. Or some may just have questions, and we are trying to get to those answers. As Ken said, we are going to move number five, the rezone. We're going to do that first. I presume most people are here for that. So with that, we have a formal rezone of 14.5 acres from R4 Single Family Residential to RVG Village Green District at Mallard Court. And I see the applicant is here. Why don't you come up and tell us a little about what you want to do?
Good evening. My name is David Novak from Barrington Consulting Group. The address is 9114 Tyler Boulevard, Mentor, Ohio. I also have with me this evening is Todd Victor. He is the president of both Ralph Victor Construction and Glenbrook Estates. As most of you know, this, I'm sure you know that this, what we're asking, there's 14 and 1/2 acres. We want to rezone it from R4 to RVG. The current site, as you can see by the map up there on the screen, along the triangular, alongside of the property, I'm going to say the easterly border, that's Route 2. And the north and the west side of the property are bounded by Sausalito East, which is in our, which currently is zoned RVG. I think that this project screams to be rezoned to RVG. Part of the things that we're doing is, this plan, we exceed the required open space. We're preserving all the wetlands on the piece of property. We are preserving some of the trees. There's another page that shows the tree preservation plan. And if this was to remain in R4 and half-acre lots, it would be my opinion that we wouldn't have to save any of the trees. We do have, and I was fortunate enough to read through some of the emails that were sent to Kathy and some of the board members here. Some people had concern about the capacity of water and sewer. We have capacity letters from both Aqua and Lake County Utilities Department stating that there is capacity for this project. The storm sewer system that we will design for this project will meet all the criteria of the City of Mentor. One of the other, some of the other comments that were prevalent throughout this is that this development doesn't match Sausalito. Again, Sausalito, I believe, was first started to develop in 1997. Things have changed since 1997, have looked in the character of homes and so forth. There's actually a development that was to the east of Sausalito called Gulf View Estates. I don't remember exactly when that one was developed. I represented the developer in that case. And again, those houses that are built in that development, which those people come through the Sausalito, those homes also do not match the style of the homes in Sausalito. Again, some of the comments, people were commenting or complaining about the current infrastructure within Sausalito, you know, the roads and the storm sewers and so forth, are maybe not in the best condition. Again, those are public roads. Those roads are the responsibility of the City of Mentor. They're not our responsibility. So I don't think that should have any reflection on this case. Our plan, we're showing, I believe it's 20 feet between homes. It said, and the streets, the sewers and all that, all the infrastructure that we're going to install in this development will be owned by Glenbrook Estates. We will maintain it, we will fix it, repair, replace, and there's no burden to the City of Mentor. The, another thought was, is that, again, we are here for our preliminary discussion. There was some concern about some of the corner lots. All the plans that we're proposing of the houses to build within this development all can have side-entry garages. So on some of those corner lots, we could truly entertain putting a side-entry garage so that you wouldn't see this long expansive side of the home with just no windows or anything. I don't know what the value of the homes are within Sausalito, but we're projecting these homes to be start around $350,000. Again, because a lot of people, when we're having these discussions and we're bringing in the development that's maybe not making some of the residents happy, we hear all the time about property values and so forth, and these homes are not going to detract from the homes within Sausalito. I don't know if you guys have any questions. I'd truly entertain any questions. But like I said at the beginning, I think because two sides or three-quarters of the boundary of this property is already RVG, it's almost like this piece that's been sitting here because typically you don't want to do what's called spot zoning. And this cries like it's spot zoning currently. It should be made RVG. Again, and it's, the type of homes, you can see from the pictures that we provided. If you go over, the owner's doing a project, similar size homes, probably not price point. But if you look at those homes over there, over there by Hollow, it's just a different location. I mean, this is close to the freeway. But same size homes and so forth, there's some homes in there over $500,000. I don't think this will be $500,000. But again, this is going to be a great-looking property, you know, development when it's finished. I think it, the residents, when it's done, will probably look back and say, this wasn't such a bad thing. Again, if you have any questions, I'm more than willing to entertain them or Mr. Victor, Victor can surely answer those questions.
I'm sure we will later. Thank you. Is there anybody here that wants to speak in favor of this? Is there anybody here that wants to speak against it? So how about I get, is there some, did people fill out some papers? Okay, let's get those in. I'll try to do the best I can with the names. Thanks, Ed. Laurel Parker? Please come to the mic and say your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman?
It's over here.
Over here.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just if, as, just as a reminder, for the folks who approach the mic, it's a voice-activated mic. We would ask that you keep a reasonable distance, but speak loud enough so that it activates. We don't want you to get too close.
Oh, I have no problem speaking loud.
There you go.
I'm Laurel Parker. I'm at 5849 Mallard Court. So I am potentially right behind this new development. So I'm new to this whole process. I'm not going to pretend that I know everything. I'm concerned about a couple of things. The amount of traffic with the amount of homes that you're proposing to put behind there. And I know that they spoke about maintaining this property. However, there is a void because I saw the trees tagged already. So I see, I see a void between what is, what we have as common ground and where their back, backyards, I'm imagining are going to end. And there's going to be a huge void, property void, of who owns this ambiguous property? And how, what are we going to do with that property? Are we going to have the potential to purchase it and fence it? Or what are we going to do with that? How much of that is going to be cleared out? Is there going to be some type of border? So those are two of my questions. Thank you.
Joe.
Read it aloud.
Upelech. Ulepe.
Let's start this way. My name is Joe Ulepech. I live at 5834 Mallard Court. Lot of questions, a lot of unanswered, unsolved problems in our area to begin with. Number one, it was a marsh. We still have basement problems. We have sump problems. We don't have big enough drains because the city won't let us tie in and pump the water out. So people have basement problems, number one. Number two, whatever they put in, who's going to handle the traffic? Did anybody call the safety director or the chief of police? How about the fire department? We're already going through a problem about the corners that meet at Blue Jay and Cardinal. Because right now, there's just a stop sign, one way, one stop. The other ones are through, okay? Now, some of the other stuff that I've thought about, are they going to be responsible to our street? I do not want my street full of mud and shit all over when they come through. Daily maintenance on the street. I've got a short drive, so do everybody else here. You're going to leave the mud on the street, and we're going to track it into our drive and into our garages? Wrong. Somebody's got to clean up the mess daily. That has to be an understanding before you write any conditions, okay? The other problem being is, you know, we already have a speed problem. And we're getting it from Birdie Lane and our own people, but you've got to do something here. There's got to be something done with the traffic, okay? Now, originally, there was supposed to have been another access. Somebody lied when they put Birdie Lane in. That's the street behind us, whatever you call it, okay? But its name is Birdie Lane. There's not enough room for the traffic. And you're going to put in how many more homes?
Please address your questions to the commission.
How many more homes? How many more homes are you putting in?
35.
35.
Double that, that's 70 cars. Every family's got two cars. How are you going to handle the traffic? There's only one way in, one way out. Let's address that first. Once that's solved, okay? We're trying to get it done now, but before you start jamming houses in there, let's get this traffic problem resolved first, all right? Okay, the other thing, when they, when they're going to build, there's plenty of trees and everything back there. How about if they make sure they remove them, not leave them laying there like they did on Birdie Lane? I back up to Birdie Lane, and a lot of the contractors just threw the, between, there's an easement back there, belongs to the city. They just laid them down in there. I had to clean mine out when I moved in, okay? So let's take a lot of consideration, number one, about the traffic. Number two, the drainage and the sewers and the streets. Because once you start getting them trucks running in and out of there, you're going to tear up the streets worse than they are. Somebody's got to be responsible. And I don't think it's going to be us personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Savage.
Jeff Savage, 5879 Mallard Court. I pretty much will go along with what he just said. But speaking of the traffic issue, how do you get fire trucks in there? For safety services. Because that's a tight space in there. That's, this puts right into my property. It's right in my backyard. And I was looking out the window today saying, oh, what a beautiful wooded area. Okay, you can still see the freeway a little bit, but basically it's nice and wooded and very nice. I understand you can't stop development, but we should at least try to maybe make it less congested. I'm thinking maybe 18 homes in there. Because that's a very tight space. And I'm looking out the window, and I can see the wetlands right back there, big water spots right where some of those houses are going to be. I could get a bead right on them looking out the back windows. I'm just trying to be a good neighbor, and I understand that you can't stop progress. But at the same time, we should be able to have a complement to our neighborhood. Because I've lived in Mentor since 1976, about the time that Sausalito was first being built. So that's when it was built. Birdie Lane came in the mid-'90s, mid-to-late-'90s. I wasn't living there at the time, but I have lived in Mentor for over 40 years, so I've seen the city grow quite a bit. Like I say, you can't stop progress. But I have seen some of the steps along the way where you jam too many things in. And I just feel that we should open it up. Mentor should not be some big hodgepodge of housing. It should be, it should flow nicely. I agree that Birdie Lane houses are, maybe don't match the design of our houses. That's the idea behind those houses. They were a California-style design. And that's, I mean, I can't say that you can't do that, but why not try to have something similar to that behind our houses? Because that's really right on them. Birdie's far enough away, you can kind of get away with it, but these are right in our backyard. And the traffic issues and so forth. My main concern is can you get rescue squads in there? We've got a lot of senior citizens, as well as a lot of kids in the neighborhood. Can we get all the extra traffic, can we? And that's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you. Don Krueger?
I'm going to read if that's okay. My name is Don Krueger, and I reside at 5833 Mallard Court. Thank you for having us tonight. But I would like to note that we're missing many concerned residents who could not be here due to health restrictions surrounding COVID-19 crisis. I know that you guys received letters and some emails from a lot of the residents, but I think I share all of our concerns regarding the zoning request Sausalito East. So I understand that this neighborhood may not mean much to Ralph Victor Construction and Glenbrook Estates. It's over 40 years old, but we are comprised of 136 home sites with over 31 acres of common area green space. And that was before, you know, it was in fashion to have to have green space. And although we are zoned RVG, it is apparent that the builder took the time and care with the aesthetic of the development and is still one of the most visually pleasing entryways and developments in our city today. I want to introduce you to some of my neighbors who did not be here tonight. Jackie Pelz, she is a Mallard Court resident who moved here in 1988. So 1988, so she has had the benefit of looking onto that wooded acreage for 32 years. Jody Mazaco, she moved her family here from California, looking at over 100 homes before selecting her home on Oriole Court, thrilled that their property backed up to woods and wetlands. Even my husband and I lived on the other side of Mallard Court for 13 years, and when an opportunity arose to buy a house on the, you know, the wooded lots there, jumped at the chance and have lived there for three years now. I even had a chance today to talk to Bob Zonaville. I'm sure most of you may be familiar with Bob Zonaville. Bob has lived in Sausalito East for 29 years, and you can bet that he would not have missed this meeting tonight but being 95 years young and he thought it best to sit this one out amid the coronavirus scare. I think that Bob said it best when I spoke with him that it has been amazing having this wooded area behind all of our homes all of these years, but we knew this day would come. We knew that it would, you know, eventually be built on. Heard a lot of the concerns so far, trees being cut down, the frictional traffic of 70-plus cars, freeway noise, a non-designated street. What does that mean? Additional snowplows, additional garbage trucks coming through the neighborhood. Sharing already compromised systems. I know you spoke to it a little bit as far as, you know, storm sewers. A lot of our electricity goes out in that area a lot. Worries about elevation, water tables, and future basement issues for a lot of us. You know, if there's something built up. We've mentioned the cracked streets. And the fact that some people on Oriole and Tanager, their decks will literally, that overlooked a wooded acreage for, you know, 30 years, will now be literally in somebody else's backyard. So all of these things are going to be a reality. We understand that. But maybe, just maybe, we can minimize the impact by maintaining our four single-family dwelling, 35, 36 homes. I know that at the last meeting, they were asked to come back with a plan with some less homes, and it looked like they cut one off the list because it was 36 and now it's 35. But 35 is still too many. We understand their right to build, but when they bought the property, 2006-ish, they knew what they bought. They bought 14 acres of property with upwards of 500-foot freeway frontage, 14 acres having several acres being wetlands, 14 acres with one shared emergency access point already servicing almost 200 homes between Sausalito and Birdie Lane, and 14 acres that were zoned R4 single-family. With all of this in mind, we ask that you maintain the current zoning of our four single-family dwelling, build 20 to 24 homes, which is more in line with the integrity of the surrounding neighborhood of Sausalito East and Birdie Lane.
Thank you. Tina DeGeorge.
Hello. So I had a question, but then also some comments.
Please state your name and address.
Oh, sorry, Tina DeGeorge, 5825 Mallard Court. So from this, I was looking at some of the documents online that you had shared. I was looking at the PDF. I could not tell what the actual lot size would be for each of 35 homes. I do have a concern about how it then fits into the aesthetics of the neighborhood. You know, as was mentioned, I think when you pull back into Sausalito, there's a very specific feel. It's very beautiful. It's very nature-based. It's very, I mean, you've got the tall trees. You've got the landscaping. There's a very specific, comfortable, loving feel. Nothing I've seen in these plans seems to match it at all. So the size of the, they almost seem postage-size stamps. The first thing I thought of when I saw this, I moved from Willowick. I know what it's like to be in a very small, tight space. When I purposely looked for a house and lived in Mentor, I'm getting away from that. That's not what this development is. But that looks like what they're trying to fit in here. I can see that they couldn't even fit sidewalks on either side of the street, that they have to limit it to one side. It's so small. The street's limited. It's not even going to be a full-size street. Like, all of this is screaming that it's, they're trying to squeeze it into a space it's not meant for. And the fact that Sausalito East is a development in and of itself, it has that single road coming in, it should fit. It should feel like it's It should feel like it's part of this development, even if on paper it's separate. It's not. It's going to be part of this neighborhood. And I don't see anything that tells me that this will be a positive change. I agree with the comments made earlier that, that's fine that if you have this land and you're going to build homes on it, but it should fit. I think, you know, a half, a house per half acre would make more sense, spread them out. I'm looking at this. I don't like that I see these houses crammed up against the borders of this land. Like, it just, there's nothing in here in this current design that I think fits. And I don't think it belongs in this neighborhood. You know, I think going, I would recommend to go back to the drawing board and have them come up with a design with less houses and make it fit our specific neighborhood. It was mentioned earlier, possibly 20 to 24 homes. Given that, I would see something like that. They could probably, you know, make those kind of improvements. But as it is, I am vehemently against this kind of design for our neighborhood. I think it would pull, it would, bottom line is, it would really negatively impact the existing neighborhood as proposed today. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Zakalowoski.
My name's Dan Zakowski. I live at 5795 Oriole Court. I moved there, oh, in 1999, so I've been there a while. We've had this meeting about 10 years ago about the rezoning to begin with. And most of these issues came up and we were opposed to them. But then again, it went ahead and it was deemed R4. So we sat on that for another 10 years until now. Now you want to go from R4 to, what is it, RVG? And I never wanted anything back there in the first place. And I'll tell you my story is that I'm concerned by living there. I know on Oriole Court, on Tannager, and Mallard, their backyards are swamps most of the year. Coming from this wetland, and I always consider it wetland. And we have problems with electricity. My power goes off twice, twice a month. The last time it went off for six hours, it... Excuse me. The power and utilities and traffic are all coming through Mallard Court. Is there sufficient sewer power? We don't have, we don't have sufficient power. We lose it twice a month. And then when there's a storm, wind, snow, we lose power. And then the sump pumps shut down. And then we get all this water and people get flooded basements. There's people on my street that have generators, diesel generators that keep their sump pumps going. Basements have been flooding here for a long time. So I'm one, my biggest thing is the utilities coming all through Mallard Court. I don't think they're sufficient, plus the traffic. So I don't, I don't know how you can design this landlocked community with all this going through one narrow street and approve this. I don't, I don't get it in the first place. So that's my, that's my take on this situation. I don't, I don't think there should be, there should be maybe some homes back there, but not very many because the utilities will not support it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill and Donna Rittenberger, 5832 Tannager Court. And I first want to thank everybody who made it here today. We were thinking we were going to be one of the very few that made it. And thank you all for sharing all of your stories because we emulate those. We're here on behalf of a lot of our neighbors also who are elderly, or not elderly, but sorry, guys, but are unsure of the safety of being here. So thank you for listening to us and being here. We wanted to share the similar comments that others made. But the first thing that I felt emotionally when I heard about this was the water. Lived here since 1998. We had four major floods. It's in the tens of thousands of dollars that we've spent in mitigating the water problem there. I called the Sewer Department of Mentor. I had someone come out and evaluate our home and our property. I formally made a complaint because you don't know what we're dealing with. And I feel that you do need to have an understanding of our lives and what your decision makes here today will affect our lives. And so I do feel pretty emotional about this financially and aesthetically. I'm the one that took Bill's picture and sent to you. He was standing 30 feet away from our property line. And that's really a makeable long putt. I'm just saying. It's not that far. So when we look out the window, we're going to see a fairly large home where we see trees. Now, this particular tree that I took is right on our property line. It's actually on common ground, but it's hundreds of years old. And I love that tree. And I don't think he will knock it down, but it's just one of many trees in that area. They've been here when the Indians were here. And they help absorb the water ground, the water under the ground that we experience in our basements. We are one of the ones with the generator. It was one of the things we needed to do. So right there where Bill is standing is where one of the homes on the drawing will be standing. He is, the 30-foot barrier is between him and that deck behind him. And there is no barriers to prevent children from coming over, from noise, from... We're just so used to having the privacy that it's going to be difficult to have a huge home right behind us like that. And they're going to be so close together that I don't, I don't think that it's going to allow green space. One of the reasons that they talked about that we moved here was because we wanted to live in nature. We wanted to be a part of nature. I can't tell you how many animals that we sit at our side deck that we see. And they're going to be displaced. And I know that's what's happened all around Mennor. And that's another concern that we haven't talked about.
Yeah, I think my hope would be is that everybody here had read the email that was sent with the concerns. And they were four items specifically. And I'm hoping that I don't need to read them because I would hope that each of you have read them. And they're all based upon, you know, our planning committee here at Mentor. And we addressed each one of the questions that would suit what is transpiring right now and placed our concerns. Some of the concerns were mentioned by the other, you know, friends in our neighborhood here. I think truly, there isn't a person here that's against homes going in there. I think that it's frustrating. One of the pictures that was up there of me being off the deck of my neighbor, Frank Supansik, it's sad. It's really sad. So what are we going to decide to do? What is the right thing to do, not only for our community, but for that plot of land that is there presently?
I don't know what those residents that are going to move into this area are going to feel either. They don't have much sidewalk. They don't have much green space between each other, as the young lady from Willowick mentioned.
You know, our yards as a whole, everyone knows, aren't all that big in the scheme of things. But if you look at the common ground, the trees surrounding, you look at the islands on the cul-de-sacs, and then you look at the space between the front door, per se, of the houses and across the street, there's so much room because of those things, the way that it was originally designed. And based upon the situation here, I guess truly, I was under the understanding at the informal meeting when it was stated that the group here had asked for it to be designed as was requested. And I, I guess I expected to come to this meeting and see that. But when I'm seeing it basically the same as it was before and with that 30-foot buffer, per se, that they're giving, you know, the people, you've got multiple streets and you've got quite a few people that are going to, you know, really be affected. I think one of the bigger things that people aren't considering too is, you're talking of 35 homes. You're speaking of two-car families, per se. Do we know that the corner of Mallard and Blue Jay is one of the main pickup points for all the kids in the neighborhood? What that's going to do is it's going to increase all of the traffic for that area. There were just a couple of other things that I wanted to bring up. When it comes to home value, if you're my neighbor, Frank Supansik, who has lived in his home now at 5822 Tannager Court for, I think, 33 years, he looks out the back of his home and has looked at woods for all this time. He's going to look out the back of his home and he is going to see one, two, three, four homes. That doesn't seem right to me in the scheme of things. The look of our neighborhood has changed. Our neighborhood has ever evolved. If you look at the scheme of it, earlier it was stated, the style of home that was built was built here many, many years ago. A majority of these homes have cedar ceilings, cedar walls, high ceilings. You know, I think everyone here loves the homes that they live in. They love the area that we moved in. We moved into that neighborhood because of the trees.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. That's all the paper I have. Is anybody else? How about from administration? You want to touch on the electric outages, traffic, keeping the streets clean and wetland?
I did, Mr. Chairman, I did send you an email that I had received from Brian Ashurst in response to some of the utility questions that were raised. As was indicated earlier, we did receive letters from the Lake County Department of Utilities stating that the wastewater treatment plant has capacity to service this development. As far as storm sewer, and again, I'm just reading what Mr. Ashurst has indicated, they will be required to submit a stormwater management plan and be able to meet the requirements, the minimum requirements that we have. That has not been received at this time, but it will be required to be reviewed and approved. As far as, as far as water is concerned, the engineering department has indicated that they will require the developer to submit analysis of available capacity from Aqua. And that the fire department will also weigh in on flow rates. We did receive a letter from Aqua indicating that an existing eight-inch water line exists on Dove Lane to service the development. And that Aqua also indicated flow rates would vary through, based on water tank levels and consumption. I know there were some comments made with regard to electricity and power. We might want to ask for some additional analysis on that. Have CEI provide an analysis on capacity. That might be an option for us to consider. We don't, that's not something we ask for with every development, but because it's an issue that's been raised, that's something maybe we want to consider. I know there were some comments made with regard to what was asked of at the informal review, which was a design of the R4. And if, we will show that that was in fact provided. It is, it is a request that we have asked of recent developers for, when they are proposing an RVG design. With this design, you certainly see fewer lots, but you also see that the stormwater and the wetlands would be occupied within actual lots. Whereas in the, in the RVG design, the wetland areas are not part of the proposed lots. The cul-de-sac is one cul-de-sac and it is, the length of that is indicated, I believe. Oh, I'm sorry. It's 1,235 linear feet of roadway as proposed there. The, the two cul-de-sacs that are proposed on the RVG design, the, the actual lengths are not noted and we've requested that, that would be an item we want to see on the actual plan. Our estimates are, we estimated that those roadways, I think Dove Lane was just over 600 feet and I think at about 700 feet. And Kingbird was about 800 feet. So there were some differences in the, in the lengths that were provided. Anything else?
No, thank you. Can the applicant come back up? I'm going to reiterate the same thing I said last time. I want these streets to look like the streets around them. I would want to see a street, a treeline, and a sidewalk, and then work your houses around that. I want it to look like a city street. And you may not get 35 houses there, but that's what I would want to see. And the cul-de-sac lengths to not exceed 600 feet. Now, I know that puts some constraints on you, but I'd want it to look like a city street because it is. And I understand that puts a lot of constraints on you, but that's where I'm with that. Is there any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varia.
I'm concerned about the single access to this whole community. Apart from the fact that, when you gave those distances, did they go all the way to Mallard Court?
No.
Which is, again, another 150 feet, right? I measured from that access point to the point where there's two means of egress to this whole area, and it's approximately 3,000 feet before you have a choice of two entrances. So it's not, so now we're talking about 3,000 feet of one access point to this entrance point here and then another 950 feet internal for the longest course. I mean, we've never accepted single-access environments like that. We're talking about almost 4,000 feet of single access. So I realize it's a, you know, a remnant piece of property that's in an existing condition. What has the police and the fire department had to say about this? Because I know they're sensitive about single-access environments.
Well, we, we did review, and I know that was one of the questions of one of the residents, I think it was one of the first residents that spoke. When we review these plans, we review it with every department. So fire, police, engineering, building, city administration, planning. We all take a look at it and evaluate it together. I don't think anybody's exactly thrilled with the fact that there's only one access point. That's never our ideal scenario. But we are dealing with a parcel that is a...
No, I understand. I guess it's the, I mean, in previous discussions, we've had concerns over a single-access point of being over 600 feet, 800 feet, 900 feet. There's been some, with the addition of this, we're approaching 4,000 feet. We're eight tenths of a mile, or, you know, 75, seven tenths of a mile of single access. And so I just, I'm just concerned about the safety aspect. I know that it's a property that needs to be accessed. I know they have a right to develop it. It just seems to be a much greater issue to me from a safety point of view of that, that length of travel, that's single access. I mean, not just internal to this property, but all the way to the point where you have two means of access. All right, so that's one issue, all right? Part of my understanding of the current definition of RVG is that there's common space in the development, if for no other reason to take the pressure off the very small, close lots, close placement of houses. They don't have a lot of space around them, not a lot of yards. So there'd be some community space, some common space. be some community space, some common space, that would be useful to the community that would live there. Can you talk a little bit about how that's developed in this, this design?
Yes, I mean, I, I believe the, the current code requires fifteen percent of open space. I, I know we greatly exceed that amount of open space. And again, you know, the, the detention basin that we're proposing there is gonna be a wet pond. We have a pavilion that we're proposing to put there. So again, it, it allows the, the residents to enjoy that amenity. Again, the, the triangle down by the freeway, again, that's gonna remain all wooded, again. So again, residents could truly walk through that area to enjoy some of the wildlife and so forth.
Okay, well, let me, let me address that too, because this was one of my points I made when you were before us before. You've done the one thing that I've, I have a history of complaining about. You've put a pavilion in people's backyards. That's not a recreational experience for anyone. It's not a recreational experience for the people who live in those houses to have a party in their backyard of, of other people. And it's not, it doesn't provide any privacy for the people having that, having the use of that pavilion. And the, and the access point you have to that is less than ten feet from each of the houses. That is also not a desirable consideration. I mean, I find that completely objectionable. It isn't, doesn't meet the spirit of common use space, and it violates the privacy of both the people using it and the people who are living in those houses. So I've, I've stated this on a number of occasions before when we talked about this, I wanted to see this common space useful, accessible to everyone in the community. Putting it in people's backyards is not a recreational experience. And, and just for the, the sake of discussion or to make the point, the wetlands and the detention or retention facility is not usable space. It, it, it's not, you're not putting a house on it, but it's also not useful to anyone. They can't use that. They can't walk through it. They can't enjoy it other than to look out the window of a house. But there, there's nothing developed here to take any advantage of, of these areas you're talking about. You also have that triangular piece which is isolated from the development by, by a, a stream. Can't get to it, can't walk to it. So, I mean, again, it, it's not useful for the purpose of enjoyment of the people who would live there. If you have any comments?
Again, I would, I would beg to differ on some of your comments, but even the triangular piece, I mean, we could surely construct a small footbridge so that people could cross over that creek, access a pavilion or something that could go into that, into that triangular piece.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
I have a question, probably for the administration, and maybe Dave could weigh in, but in particular on the sublots six, seven, eight, nine, and ten, it's, which is showing the thirty-foot rear yard setback, how does the RVG buffer requirement with this private street development differ, if any, from Menter's? Because if, if, you know, Menter's typical buffer requirement with the number of trees and fencing and mounding and everything like that, that might eat up that whole distance. So that was a real concern there.
We don't have a, we don't have a setback requirement residential to residential.
Okay.
So they, they established the thirty-foot setback, and I know that was brought up a number of times. That could be more established with, enhanced from a buffer standpoint.
Right. So right now, it's just lawn to lawn?
Right.
Okay. Dave, could you weigh in on that as well?
I would agree with what Kathy has to say, but again, it's, it's lawn to green space. Because on the Sausalito property, along our north border and our west border, there is a buffer, an open space buffer along both of those properties that exist on the Sausalito property, which the Sausalito Homeowners Association has control over.
Okay. Yeah, that's just, in my mind, especially those units, I mean, it really encroaches into the existing, you know, whether it's visual space or not.
You know, and, and I understand, you know, a lot of these people have commented about the visual that they have currently. Again, it's, one of the people that, that stood up here said that, you know, they understood that this property would be developed, okay? So I, I, whether it's today, or it's ten years from now, or whenever, someday it will be developed. And if, if Larry could change to the RV, the, the R4, that's, that's what we could really develop on this site if we stayed in the R4. And the problem with this is, is that you have nine lots. At the current cost of construction for roadways, okay, it comes out to be eighty-three thousand dollars a lot, just in improvements, just in improvements, okay? So, again, I could appreciate why a lot of people would not care what it costs us, but at eighty-three thousand dollars a lot, just for improvements, that does not include land cost, and it does not include any profit. Hopefully, we'll, we would make profit on it, okay? So, again, and it always used to be a rule of thumb, I'm not sure it is today, but rule of thumb was, you had, when you had a project to make it viable, it was one-third was improvements, one-third was land costs, and one-third was profit. So if we assume eighty-three thousand dollars, or the, just the improvements, these lots are not gonna sell for two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars, and then you're gonna put a house on top of it, okay? That's just, isn't economically feasible. And if we go back, and again, this, this would probably have to be pretty close to what we would need to do for a, if, if we develop the property to keep it in, people keep using the word "look," okay, of Sausalito. This is not going to look like Sausalito. These houses that are going to be built are gonna be probably more similar to the ones that are over on Burry Lane. Keeping, and if you look at the, at the pictures that we provided with as part of this, this package, they don't look like the houses in Sausalito. That's, while back in nineteen seventy-five or eighty, when the, when Sausalito was developed, that's a different time. That's, I understand that people love what they, what they have, they like their neighborhood and so forth, but whether it's RVG or R4, these houses are not going to look like the houses in Sausalito. They're not. And if you go back to the, so if you want the field, we would have that as a public street. At best, you could get two homes per lot, okay? So now you're looking at eighteen lots. Again, economically, it doesn't work. It just does not work, okay? And, and again, I can appreciate the people that live in this, around this piece of property, but when this property was developed, again, I don't know exactly when, this section of Sausalito, because there was an access strip there, it was always in, I believe, always intended to be developed at some point, or that strip wouldn't have been left there. And it, and I don't know why this wasn't rezoned RVG when the rest of the property was, because again, it, it, it makes sense. And I go back to the, the comment from Mr. Varga, while I understand that it's four thousand feet, I'll assume your math is correct, this is not a, this is not something that we created. We did not create this. And again, if this was developed as an R4 project, that four thousand feet would not change. These roads are gonna be made to the same standards of, of the city code. So I believe it's twenty-four, twenty-two feet wide. They're gonna be twenty-two-foot-wide roads, the same thing that's in, I'm gonna imagine is in Sausalito. So fire trucks can get in, all those things. All those things are important to us as they are to, to the residents of, of Sausalito.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
To the commission, maybe, has there been a wetland delineation made yet, or is this just preliminary?
We did a, we did a wetlands investigation. I do not believe it was submitted yet to the Army Corps, but we have a report that we...
It is submitted.
Oh, it is submitted to, it has been submitted to the Army Corps. So these wetlands that we show are, are believed correct.
And then, as far as this, let's see, the city and chairman made a comment regarding the, what is it? Conservation Protection Zone, which is, what's about nineteen would be affected by that? Can they work in that zone, or is that just a setback requirement to the floodplain or to the marsh, Heasley Creek?
Can they work in it? I, I don't, I don't believe so.
Well, because they got a house right on top of that line, there's no way they can construct that house as it currently shows on this plan. That was gonna be, I know this, we have like all these comments that the engineer department requires, so I don't know if that's gonna be cleared up.
You're looking at sub, you're looking at unit nineteen?
Correct.
I mean, that...
And even on unit nineteen, I mean, we do have some that are varying sizes of, of envelopes. So if that is an issue, we could surely reduce that envelope so that it would not, so that we could construct the house, because we do need some area around the house to navigate during construction.
Sure, sure. And Dave, maybe you can comment on the storm sewer system. I know there's a floodplain on this property. Putting a bridge over that, I would not recommend a bridge over a floodplain for, you know, people at access, triangle. But the storm sewer system in this subdivision, is it gonna be connected to Mallard Drive, or is that gonna be separate?
Our preliminary design has indicated that, again, all the stormwater course would go into the detention retention, and then it would flow south into Heasley Creek.
Okay. And then the requirement from the billing department is that there's yard drains for every unit that gets constructed?
Yes.
Are those going in as part of the improvement plans if this goes forward, or?
Yes.
Okay. And one of my big pet peeves is the, the stormwater management area, how, how are you gonna be able to maintain that and clean that with, I mean, you don't show any access getting back there right now. I don't know if you can use a setback area to do that or not, but right now, there's no way to clean that pond out.
I'm sure we can come up with something that satisfy that requirement. Again, but that, while it's a good point, again, that's, that's not a burden on the city of...
No, but you may lose a lot. That's all I'm thinking, if, if you need to provide, well, you should provide access...
Yes.
...to maintain it. Mr. Chairman?
David. Just real quick, wanna echo what Mr. Varga said. Really don't like people walking between houses to get to a pavilion. It seems silly, it's lack of privacy. My other big thing is, I have a couple of friends who live in the Sausalito subdivision, and they have mentioned to me over the last six months, they have lost power once or twice a month over the last six months. Something's going on, and I think that needs to be looked into before we say we wanna tie thirty-four more houses into the power grid. So is there a way we can contact CEI and say, can you guys come investigate this?
And that, and that was one of the recommendations of the engineer, engineering department, would be to have the developer request from CEI an analysis of available capacity.
I think that's something we need to see before we move forward.
I think with the amount of questions from the commissioners and the, and not everybody having the ability to be here, I'd like to keep the public portion of this open, and I'm looking for somebody to motion to table here.
And before we do that, I just want the residents to know, we did get all your emails. We do receive them, so just know that we did read every single one, okay? I would make a motion to table this.
Hold on real quick, what do you got?
Well, again, and I, I appreciate your thought, but as the city manager mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, this may be the last public meeting for a while?
No.
Or...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Flippeck?
No, what I said is that this may be the last meeting where we're here in person. There will be, we will be following, we would desire to follow the Ohio Revised Code's revision to the open meetings law, which would allow us to move forward in a virtual manner. So those at home who wish to join the meeting will have the opportunity to do that, but these meetings will continue, just not in person.
And I, and I, and I stand corrected, but again, I'm not saying that this new virtual meeting won't work, but I think it's gonna be more difficult for a lot of the people that have their concerns in that environment, environment, environment may be worse.
Well, I know the city's working hard on it right now, so new ground for all of us. Ground. So I have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ed, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, moving on. A conditional use permit to allow a recreational facility at seven-nine-five-six Tyler Boulevard. Is that applicant here?
Do you wanna give them a couple of minutes to clear?
Yeah, let's...
Number one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Since we skipped?
We're gonna do number one. Conditional use permit to allow a rental truck facility at seven-four-four-five Mentor Avenue.
Will you tell us a little about what you wanna do?
Looking to add to my business to rent U-Haul trucks and trailers. Pretty much it.
I guess, uh, does anybody here that wants to speak in favor of this? Is there anybody here who wants to speak against it? Okay, the public portion is closed. Anything from administration?
I'm sorry, I'm calling up the next applicant. Let me see, I'm just sitting. I think, as we indicated in our staff report, there are some items of, of concern that we wanted to point out. As indicated on the aerial view and in the staff report itself, this particular parcel is split zoned. So the front portion along Mentor Avenue is actually B2 general business, while the back portion is M1. And for this particular use, truck rental facilities are only permitted in the industrial zoning classification. So a couple of the items that we noted of concern were, how do you manage that? How do you, how do you monitor and keep any kind of trucks that might be dropped off, picked up, from staying outside of that B2 zone? The, the other issue is, is the location of the office of the truck rental facility. We presumed it was gonna be in the, in the existing front portion of the building where the office is now, and again, that would be in the B2 zone. So, you know, we have these, some of these parcels that exist throughout the city with the split zoning. It, it is what it is, but, and again, in order to allow for such a use, that's something that's gotta be taken into consideration. We had some concerns with regard to the access, limiting the access to the Reynolds Road access point. And, you know, that's, that has some concerns. I mean, you've got folks that are driving trucks that have never really, aren't in the business of driving trucks, and you're gonna be entering onto a pretty busy street. We certainly wouldn't want any left turns coming out of that, coming off onto three-oh-six. Also, any areas that would be proposed for the truck facility, the, the trucks and the trailers would have to be on improved surfaces. That's not provided for at this time, if that was something that would be required as part of any condition of approval. Lastly, there would be, that, M1 does require an adequate or minimum setback, minimum of thirty feet with a buffer. If it's not gonna provide a, a mounding or a buffer of some type, then we have to be a setback fifty feet. So, and that's from the property line. So those are some of the, the items that we were concerned about when we were evaluating this proposal.
Thank you. I have the same concern. You have somebody that's rented a truck, that's been in it for two-hundred yards now, they're coming out on three-oh-six, and they're, coming out on 306, and they're, you know, the people making that left turn, I have the, I echo the same concern, so...
With all due respect, you have a Penske dealer right next door that comes out on the Mentor Avenue and does the same thing on a busier street than Route 306. So Penske is out of Sun Rental right next door to my left, which we border the same property. They have Penske trucks up on Mentor Avenue. So I'm not asking to put trucks up on Mentor Avenue. And yes, the concern that somebody might drop off a truck or a trailer after hours, it's our duty in the morning to take those things in the morning, check them in, put them back where they belong. As far as a buffer of maybe possibly like a landscape or something like, it's being spoken in here, one side of me is the railroad tracks and the storage unit for Sun Rental, and the other side of me is a retention pond and a water tower. So behind my building, there is nobody next to me. No structures, no buildings, no one. Across from me is, you have Osborne cement trucks that are clearly visible.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, well over 50 feet from the... Mr. Varga.
I have a question to the, for the city. When I look at this document, the property that's identified associated with your property, you don't own the storage units next to you?
No.
Okay.
That's Sun Rental's property.
Okay. Well, that property line is at the edge of the driveway, as I can see.
The edge of my driveway?
Yeah.
No, it's by the pond, it's the retention. There's a...
No, no, I'm talking about the edge from here. It's, it shows it right next to the paved area. Now, it may be off a little bit, but the, but this document shows the, the storage of these vehicles further to the east than the paved area. That's a drainage way. It's about six feet deep. It's a wooded drainage way. You can see it on, you can see it on this drawing. There's no dirt, there's no, there's no place there to park anything. And then there's a fence associated with the storage buildings.
That's on the other side of that drainage.
Yeah, I know, but you can't park the buil, these vehicles in the drainage way. Where are you going to park these vehicles?
I have a 2,000 square foot building on the back. I have two buildings on my property. I say my property because I signed papers today. So Lou Bob's is going to be no longer involved. I bought them out. So what I have is at the back of my building, I have a separate 2,000 square foot building there.
It's the dark square? That built, that right there?
That is correct.
Okay, but you show these, this, this document that we've provided to us...
That's one of you make?
Shows the, the U-Haul trucks parked to the east of the pavement line, in a place where there's no pavement and there's no dirt even. There's a drainage way.
I didn't have an overhead view when I did the drawing, so...
Well, there's also no space, because that's the driveway.
At the back of, at the back of my main building, 10,300 square foot building. Trying to stay, I didn't, I...
Put that next one up there.
I apologize, because I didn't go over all this with Brian.
This area here has a drainage way right through the middle of it, okay?
Okay.
There is no space here. There's a fence here, there's a drainage way that runs right here.
The fence is on...
Drops right off of your property. And I, and from that drawing, it doesn't even show it as being your property. Your property line looks like it's at the edge of the pavement, or close to it.
Up closer, up closer to the building it is, because it's, that's where that, right up closer to the building is where my property line is.
Yeah, I understand, but you can't, you show the parking for these vehicles to the east of the pavement, and there's no place there to park anything. It may not even be your property, is what I'm trying to get at.
At the back of my building. I have two buildings on my property.
I understand that. Are you listening to what I'm saying?
I'm listening to what you're saying. But I have gravel behind my building.
You show parking to the east of the pavement, here. Well, that, that's my mistake then.
That was his mistake.
I didn't have an aerial view of the... Well, I mean, I just went out there and looked, and you could see that there was no place to park there. There's a drainage way that's about six feet deep, about eight feet wide, and that's where you show parking these vehicles. So if you're going to park the vehicles there, where are you going to park them?
Trying to tell you, behind, behind my second building, I have a gravelled area.
Right there.
Yes.
Okay, and that is, then that becomes visible from the street, correct?
Of course.
From, from Reynolds?
Yes.
Looks like there's a tree.
A tree's almost all the way down.
So where that tree is, is where you'd be parking the vehicles.
Correct.
Right there.
Yeah, and I apologize, because I didn't go over the plans that Brian wrote up for me.
Yeah, I understand. Well, I mean, I'm just looking at what I see, and I, I drove, I drove out there and I looked, and I said, you're parking these three vehicles in a place where there's, there's nothing.
And I can understand.
There's no dirt, there's no pavement, there's a drainage way.
So behind the building that's white with the blue top is where we're proposing to do that. That tree right there is about 80% out right now.
Well, I, yeah, I'm not worried about the tree, I'm just... And then, associated with this, are you going to put a, are U-Hauls sign up someplace?
It would, not a huge one. It would be probably, I don't know what they provide, I'm...
You're going to put it off of Reynolds Road, right?
Correct.
You're not going to put it off of Mentor Avenue?
No, no. I'm not looking, I'm not looking to reinvent the wheel here, I'm not trying to argue with anybody. I just want to expand my business a little more.
No, I, I understand, I, I just, the first thing I had to get over was the impossibility of parking the vehicles where you show them.
I understand, and I appreciate that.
That doesn't work, right?
Now, just to give an overall of my company, I got a occupancy permit in 2016 for this building. I moved one of my locations out of Willoughby, I brought it into Mentor, and moved, merged two of my, two of my locations into one to grow, and I've done a ton of improvements to this building. I've done the roof, I painted the building, I rock faced the front, we cleaned up a lot of vegetation, I worked along with the city of doing some of the beautification of the hillside on Reynolds Road that was left overgrown and high grass, all that wetland at the bottom. We dug out a drain that nobody knew was there. There was a big semi trailer on there when I moved in, that, we had that disposed of. I know that was like an eyesore of the city.
Yeah.
So, and I'm looking to paint that back building, we're looking to do some more improvements. Just kind of holding off until I bought the property. We've put, we've put probably over $100,000 in this property out of our own pocket prior. So my concerns and my intentions are to have nothing but a very nice environment. I'm not looking to have a junkyard, I'm not looking to stack, stack things up and make them look un-uniformed. I'm just looking to continue my business, expand a little bit if it's allowed.
So right now, the area that you're intending to park all these vehicles is not even paved?
It is not paved at the moment. I have two, I had two tree, big trees back there. We got to get these trees out, they're going to get ground up. Right now, there's, there's gravel down there, which has been there for, who knows, 70s? I mean, there is, there's an existing concrete pad, it might fit one truck on it at the back of my building.
It's, it's not that I don't trust you.
No, 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 that's fine.
But if we postpone this, or we tabled this, and you could come back with an actual diagram of what you're proposing to do and where you're proposing to do it, and how you're going to control the traffic.
Draw it up for you right now, if you want me to...
Well, no, I don't want it right now.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Go through the channel.
Now, I don't want to, I don't want you to think that I'm going to run out and pave this thing tomorrow, because I'm, I'm...
Well, I'm not talking about, I'm looking for a drawing.
I'm putting a lot, a lot of money in it.
I'm looking for a drawing that is accurate enough to show us exactly what you're going to propose, so that we can then review it and make a decision. Because right now, what we have here is not, is not clear.
Understood.
So I would make a motion to table.
Well, anyone else have anything?
I'm sorry, yeah, I, maybe I spoke too soon.
I, just one thing.
Sure.
Have you read over all the conditions that the, the staff put on here?
I read over some of these. Some of them I agree with, and some of them I want to discuss.
What, what do you don't agree with?
Yeah.
One is with having landscaping or bushes put up in the back, I don't see a reason for that, number one. Number two, if, and this is a deal breaker, then we can figure it out now, I am not going to be able to staff somebody in that back building to check a customer in or check a customer out. I could have my parking for the vehicles in the back of the building, but I have a large enough lobby, I would like to be able to at least take care of my customers as they come in through the front door in my, in my main lobby. It would just be, it just is no way going to ever work for me. I, it, there's, I mean, in the beginning, I'm hoping that in the six to eight months, it becomes a good, good business for me to add to my company, but to staff somebody, put a lobby, put a computer, all that in the back, it's just not going to weigh out financially. I mean, I'm not going to have 30 people a day coming in and getting trucks. I mean, I would love to, it just generates more money, but...
Mr. Varga?
Yeah, I, this introduces the next issue, which, or another issue, which is...
Correct.
I'm a customer.
Yes.
I'm not driving around Reynolds Road to, to make a turn and come up the hill and then walk, park the vehicle and walk all the way to the front of your building to get to the office. I'm going to come in off of Mentor Avenue, regardless of what the signs say, and park in front of the office to drop off my truck.
And that's probably going to happen, I mean, that's...
And that, in its nature is, and let someone from the city tell me, that in its nature is not what we, we want to permit.
Let me ask you this.
No, we don't...
It's not a permitted use.
It's not a permitted use. So, so I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to, you know, if, if that's the way it's going to work, then we, we don't want that to happen.
I'm sure you don't, but I mean, it's already happening right at my neighbors.
Hold on, the, the neighbor, Sun Rental, that is a grandfathered use. That is not the same issue that we're dealing with.
And I'm not trying to do the same thing. I'm not trying to keep...
Well, I understand, I, I mean, I have, I've, I have a problem too with, you know, people driving, putting up a sign that says right in, right out, and then people do whatever they want to do, because it's the most easiest thing for them to do. So if we say, don't, don't, you put up a sign that says no U-Haul traffic...
They're still going to do it.
They're going to do it. I know that, you know that.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
We all know that, right? So that's not something I can feel strongly about moving forward with, because it violates everything we're, the spirit of what we're talking about. And for that matter too, just to right in and right out at the lower end, which is the something the city suggested, if I want to go south and I'm coming out of there, I'm going to go south, you know, and the signs, unless we post a police officer there, it's, people are going to drive where, where they have the opportunity to drive.
Absolutely.
So we can't create situations that cause the problems. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Have there been any traffic problems associated with Sun Reynolds using the Mentor Avenue entrance?
I don't know, but let's stick to this issue here.
I was just curious.
Do I have a motion?
I, I made a motion to table, just because I think we need to see a more detailed presentation. Maybe there's no second.
I guess I, I would second, but I think we still need to sort of resolve this.
It's the zoning issue, that's the problem.
Right, right. You're trying to run a beat, you're trying to run a, an M1 business out of a B2 building.
Well, it's a split, yes.
And you can't get around that. You're not going to...
So then I withdraw my table motion.
So do I have another motion?
Motion to approve with the eight conditions.
I'll second. Ed, please call the roll.
Varga.
No.
Mr. Cook.
No.
Mr. Haddon.
No.
Mr. Perkovich.
No.
And Mr. Tiedemann.
No.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right, you guys have a great night.
Hey, conditional use permit to allow recreational facility at 7956 Tyler Boulevard. Would you tell us a little about what you want to do?
Good evening. My name is Gaetano Savelli. I'm here for Savelli Dance LLC. We have had a dance studio and martial arts studio in Mentor approximately 20 years, and in Mentor on the Lake about 10 years prior to that, so 30 years total. We would be looking to move from our current location down the road at Tyler Boulevard to this location. Specifically, more than anything, we like the space, but also there is ample parking, which at our current location, we have difficulty with. And we would be looking to, to purchase the property and use it for a, a dance studio and martial arts studio, approximately three separate dance studios, and then like a toddler dance studio, and then some, some office space, various changing rooms.
Thank you. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of it? Anybody to speak against? This public portion is closed. Kathy, anything from administration?
The only thing I would note is, is we took a look, a close look at the, at the parking of the facility and the current users of the facility, and I would note that the dance studio's hours of operation do not come into conflict with the, with the existing tenants in the, in the building. Those are probably, are pretty much eight to five type users, and the dance studio operates mostly in the evenings and on weekends. So I know, just from their current facility to here, it would be a specific, a significant improvement in the parking.
Thank you. All I have is, are you going to have an AED device onsite?
We will, I'm not sure if we have one right now, if that's necessary, if we need to comply with, any, we will comply with anything that we need.
Yeah, I second.
I'd like to make that a condition.
Yeah, I would make that a condition.
Is, anybody from the commissioners, anything else? Did I get a motion?
Motion to approve with three conditions.
The third being AED device?
Second.
Ed, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
And Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Conditional use permit to allow recreational facility at 7471 Tyler Boulevard. Is that applicant here?
Will you tell us a, tell us a little about what you want to do?
No, I apologize ahead of time, I did a nervous speaking, so 57 years, I'm still nervous.
Take your time.
Anyway, my name is Cynthia Brookins, and I am a partner in the business of Box Hit. The founder of Box Hit, he had a little bit of cough, he getting over a cold, so I kind of suggest, wish he was here, but, you know, what's going on, so yeah, so he had no problem with that. And anyway, what we want to do is have a boxing, a boxing fitness facility. Right now, the founder is at Lake Health Fitness Center, and has around 50 people who sign up for the, you know, boxing program. They pay extra money on top of their membership at Lake Health Fitness. So about, he has a pre-signup sheet, so about probably, about 20 are coming over to the new facility, and then he, plus he has about 15 other people outside of Lake Health who aren't part of the facility. So he's been doing this since he was nine years old, and as you can see, his history, or his resume is, you know, qualified to do this. So the age range is anywhere from, I mean, there's a couple of nine-year-olds who are with their mothers who love doing it, really good with kids, and there's even 70, a couple people in their 70s who like doing it. They just like it for the, you know, they get a little bit of exercise, they don't do a lot of heavy hitting or anything, but, you know, they, so they do that. So the hours are stated on there, it would be five people at a time for a 60-minute session. And it would just be continuing what he's doing at Lake Health, but taking it out of Lake Health Fitness, because they're kind of getting squeezed out because of, you know, everything is, the rehabilitation that's going on, they're needing a room, and so he'll find a facility to continue the boxing, because everybody wants it to continue. We are CPR certified, and we will have a...
Is that all? Thank you. Is there anybody here that wants to speak in favor? Anybody here opposed? Anybody here opposed? Public portion is closed. Paul, you have something?
I have a couple of questions. I'd just like to clarify sort of your business model on how you run the facility. You say right now you're going to have one employee. I assume that will be the gentleman who's the boxing trainer, that's the employee. Will you also be working there or?
Yeah, well, part-time. I have a full-time job.
Okay.
Which I will continue to keep.
How do you bill your clients? What, do you have a membership fee? Do you have a?
Yes.
Okay, so if, if I have a membership, I can use any of your facilities at any time? Or do I have a restriction on when I can come in?
Well, the membership is for, right now, for your session. So you would, you would have a timed session, so we can keep it limited to the five people per session.
Okay. But I have to pay a membership to get into one of those sessions then?
Yes.
All right, and that entitles me to use the facilities for recreation, for, for entertainment, for training?
Yes.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you very much.
Kathy, do you have anything?
Just one item of clarification. The, I think it was the business license that's registered with the state. There's just an, an issue of spelling that I wanted to hear on record.
Oh, okay.
How do you spell hit?
Capital H, capital I, capital I, capital T.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything from the commission? Mr. Tiedemann?
Part of, one of the conditions is that there's only training there, no boxing matches, or you're not going to do any kind of competition or anything. I just wanted clarification on that.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve with six conditions.
Second.
Ed, please call the roll.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Conditional use permit to allow a limited retail activities at 7630 Tyler Boulevard, Unit 6. Will you please come up and tell us a little about what you want to do?
I'm from spices. My name is Ashish Patel. Yash is our project manager for our retail. We are about to start. Okay, so at MG Spices, what we do is like we import spices in a bulk and we supply to business. Majority of our customers are in like out of state and they're kind of like, just for example, like, it's not particularly my customer, but like I'm giving you example, like Macormick or you find any, any spice company like in bottles in the grocery store, they are my customer. I'm supplier for them. So, this is what we go up to now and some of the like big box grocery store, they are also our customer. They have like as in small version, excuse me, if you don't mind, I want to show you what I'm about to do it. So this kind of bottle we want to fill out and we just want to make it available to the local public in Mentor. And some of the people in Mentor, they know about like there's a big spice company in Mentor, but why they're not able to get it directly. So that's exactly why we come up with that idea to one of the spice retail. So basically, our spices are already going in the, outside in industry, like grocery stores and everywhere. But we want to just try out and we want to just start open front. If someone wants right away, they can come and take it. So we are not changing our business hours or anything at all. It will be remain the same and so it's just like someone want to stop by, take whatever they want right away and that's it.
Thank you. Does anybody here want to speak in favor? Anybody want to speak against? Anything from administration?
Nothing other than the conditions noted.
Anything from the commissioners?
Just a restatement. Do you see that the number three condition? That the retail sales shall not exceed 15% of your gross receipts?
That will be way under.
Way under, okay.
This is our projection.
I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve with three conditions.
Second.
Ed, please call the roll.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number five, we already did. Six is tabled. We have no old business, new business. Number seven, tabled. We have a final subdivision to create three industrial lots at Mercantile Drive and Hamilton Drive. I see that out. Can you tell us a little bit more?
Hi, everyone. George Davis, one of the partners in subdivision. Basically, we were here recently for Phase One. Like to continue on and do Phase Two at the same time since we do have, well, we're final negotiations with a purchaser for that back piece. So, that's what we're asking for. Not much new to talk about. It was on the plan from the beginning. We just had phased it to try to, you know, limit some expenses, but with this purchaser, get it in there.
Thank you. Kathy, do you have anything?
No, this is pretty straightforward. We just indicated the engineering department had noted a number of conditions, a number of comments that they would work with the applicant to address.
And we're good with all those conditions.
Anything from the commission members?
I just have a observation or a question. To the east, you have a residential community. Are you going to do a preliminary grading of this property at this time?
Well, the potential purchaser is going to be doing their own site work and they've actually been into the city, talked to Kathy and they, they're aware of the buffering requirement.
Right now, I was just concerned about any, any drainage in an interim period that might affect those residential communities.
Oh, yeah, no, we, we'll just be doing the roadway initially.
Okay, so when we see the, whatever gets built, then we'll handle it then. Right, thank you.
Anything, guys? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve with the one condition.
Second.
Ed, please call the roll.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Informal rezoning of 1.11 acres from OV Old Village District to B2 General Bis, General Business District at Center Street.
They have requested, as of today, to be tabled.
So it said. Final site plan of a commercial building car wash at 7350 Palisades Parkway. What we move for, we got a motion to table the informal rezon.
I'll make a motion to table submission nine.
Second.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Final site plan of a commercial building car wash at 7350 Palisades Parkway. Please tell us a little about what you want to do.
So we were here last month and I believe we got approval for the, the site layout. So we're back now, basically just looking at the entrance and the front face of the building. I believe that's the, the main contention.
Commission members, you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
The, I understand what you're trying to do here with the entrance, especially by the entrance to the building. But you have an elevation that's, I don't know, how long is this building? 100 feet?
150.
150 feet, okay. You have a, you have an elevation that faces your main, the main public street of 150 feet. And it looks like it's painted block, not painted block. What, what is the material on that long elevation?
The side of it is, is split-faced brick. And then the, the stone structure on the front will be like faux stone.
My concern is with this 150-foot wall of, of nothing facing the, the primary street. I know there was a comment made by the city to try to break that up or to do something with it. I'm going to highly recommend that you come up with some presentation that keeps that from looking like a warehouse facing the street.
Yes, it's not, the front is facing the, the main street. This is going to be on the side, so it's back.
No, I'm, I'm talking about the street that comes in, the Palisades Street. That's your main access point. I mean, that's the main right-of-way.
Correct.
And this is the elevation. The second one down, or the, the, it's called side elevation. It is just a wall of block.
We, we did take staff's recommendation to put some faux windows along the side of there and we'll try to have some type of design in the, in the block as well.
Well.
Be different shades.
We, we have a, we have a preference in the city of Mentor for brick. I know that's probably not what you're thinking about. But I certainly would want to see something other than what's there now. 150 feet of, of wall of block, whether it's scored or not, or split-faced or not, is, is not a desired architectural appearance for the city. My opinion.
I echo that, 100%.
So are, is the, the look up there with the, the fake windows, is that not? What else would you suggest then?
I, I don't, is there something, I don't see something there.
I guess there are air registers, if we.
Well, when I get, yeah, I don't see anything there.
You might be looking at different elevations, so the.
But that, that is the elevation though. It's, well, it's, it's the major elevation that's on the street. So I'm, I, I couldn't go ahead and just say, oh, let's approve this now based on not having any idea what, what you would do with that elevation to make it architecturally pleasing.
Okay, is the, is the front of it okay then, if we just work on the side?
That's your deal. I mean, you know, I don't have a problem with that. I, I, it's my opinion again, if that's what you want to do. Let me ask one question about that. Is, is that easily removable in case someone in the future? I'm not saying that you're not going to be completely successful, but if someone in the future would, would take, take over that facility and they don't want, which one are we, we're looking at that, that's the elevation that you're proposing, not necessarily. You've had three different ideas here, but that's the one.
Correct.
Is that just, is that just overbuilt on the building? I mean, is there?
The, the structure up front is overbuilt over a masonry.
Okay, so, so to be honest, that's your deal? That's what you want it to look like? I don't have a problem with that because it's also on the side of the building as the public views the overall building on the street. I just have a problem with, you're going to have to architecturally treat that elevation. Otherwise, it's, it's a no-go.
And we, the staff comment about adding faux-style windows.
You could add windows, you could add, ask glass block, but I'm also concerned about just having it be split-faced block. That you, that we might upgrade the, the material that faces the road. I'm not telling you what to do. We do have a pension in this town for brick, but you know, that's. But something has to happen other than that elevation. So you want to table this? I mean, is there other opinions here?
Commissioner, anything from Kathy?
We, we did not receive samples, so we're going to need sample boards.
So let's just table this until we see a, another architectural proposal for that elevation.
Before we, is this the one you guys want to do? Because I have like four options in front of me.
It's the one dated March 18th.
Okay.
It's option A.
dated March 18th?
It's its own item, it's its own sheet, it's, it's, there's a received date of March 18th in the corner.
It's this one, right? And when I look at the, yeah, I don't actually see an elevation as part of that. But yes, I understand the one you have and that's fine. And we would want to see actual materials. But my biggest concern is, and in this, you know, it's, it's interesting. This is the elevation that faces the street. You have some images of trees. I don't, I, I think that was just meant to reflect the landscaping that you would put there? You could actually put that in the side of the building or, you know. I'm just, I'm leaving it open as to what you would do, but even that becomes more interesting than what's there now.
So there, one of the other things in the staff's comments was, it says, "The administration recommends approving final site plan and architectural review separately." So are we approved for the site plan officially?
Oh, yeah, no, we need to talk about that.
Okay, right, well, I wasn't speaking to the site plan. I was only speaking to architectural design, so.
Yes, sir.
And I guess, to, to the point of the design, one of the items that we had mentioned was the proportionality of the height of the front parapet wall or, or accent wall, if you will, with the rest of the building. I don't know if you want to talk to that or speak to that at all. I mean, it does, the overall height does meet our height requirements in, in that particular zone. But it is, it was in the administration's position, a little bit disproportionate to each other. It wasn't, it was such a stark difference in the height.
My opinion is, I understand they're doing something that's kind of theatrical, kind of Disney-like. So, it's not, I don't have a problem with it. But I do have a problem with the rest of the, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Are you okay with condition number three, which you limit, reduce down to two lanes?
No, on that. So, the, yes, the, we have three lanes, so two are pay lanes and the third one is what they call a members' lane. So you have a RFID tag in your car and it basically allows you to pull around. So it, it gives them their own lane so they can get through quicker and faster. It's, it's a traditional setup in most washes that are going to do this type of volume. And we still have the exit, so if somebody got through and, you know, didn't have their money, we can open up the gate and then still exit them back out to Palisades Parkway. So there, in, in our mind, there isn't really a need to have something that drove all the way around separate from what this is because we can still accomplish if somebody got in the lane and didn't need to get there. But it, this would, this allows us to put the max amount of cars through per hour, which fits with all of our stacking requirements.
Relative to the site plan, I, I just have a question on page C4. There's some kind of structure in front of the building in the ground. And I'm not sure I know what that is. I'll, I'll beg ignorance. There's a bunch of stuff in the ground between the elevation, the north elevation and the street. Could you tell me what that stuff is?
Is that the bio-retention cell?
Well, there's something there and then there's a, a line that loops around and.
Oh. To the north there, they.
Well, it's not really showing up on, it's C, it's drawing C4.
Oh, it's a berm elevation.
Is that a berm?
Yeah.
Yeah, it kind of, it kind of shows up. There's something that goes to the sidewalk and, I mean, to the driveways at both ends. Yes. Could you explain what that is? Proposed bio-retention cell. And then there's, yeah, just explain what that is.
It's like a little culvert settling there where the bio, where the bio-retention area comes off of the storm.
Okay, so it's just for, it's just for rainwater?
Yeah, it's part of the storm.
It's storm, and it's for storm, it's a storm, the function, a design for the handling storm runoff. Okay. Wasn't sure if it had something to do with the.
Oh, no.
Washing, you know, I just did.
Part of the EPA requirement is the street, the storm water coming off.
Okay.
So is what does that.
And then, do we have a landscaping plan here? Looking, I'm looking. The landscaping plan, I can't seem to find it.
It's in the last page.
Last page. Very last page? City found that adequate?
The landscape plan? Well, we, we indicated in, in one of the conditions, item five, landscaping along the building frontage shall consist of a mix of annuals, perennials, ground covers, ornamental and evergreen shrubs. More varied than what's been provided. And also recommends an alternative to the Cleveland Select pear trees as proposed on the landscape plan.
And you accept those conditions? All right.
Let's get back to number three with this third lane. So the third lane is like a, like a fast-pass lane?
Yes.
So you stack, you stack in two lanes, and then somebody that pays the monthly membership or whatever can drive in there, or they have something in their car. Explain that a little bit more.
Sure, there's an RFID tag in their car, so there's not a pay station third lane. They're just a reader. So they just pull up, it knows who they are, the gate opens up, and then they just can cruise through.
Like an E-pass on the highway?
Exactly, exactly.
You think you need that third lane for that?
Yes, otherwise we'd only have one pay lane. I mean, memberships are one of the big parts of the business, trying to make those folks feel more special and make it more timely for them. So it's an important part of our process, and it allows us to have all the stacking that we need, so we don't ever stack out into the Palisades Parkway.
Okay, so you're stacking in two lanes, and you generally...
You drive through.
You drive through, and they get the cut in front of everybody that's waiting.
Yes, it makes me feel good.
Membership has its, uh...
Privileges.
Yeah. Can you have them?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. So that would effectively be a bypass lane. Where would they flash that pass?
It's in, it's mounted in their windshield. It's a sticker, so.
Okay, so they just pass through, so if I, if someone wanted to use that as a way to get out, they could do that as well, right?
Yes, we would just come over and open up the gate, and then they could scoot right out.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Both of your exits have gates? Is that, did I read that? Are they gated?
Just the one exit would probably have a gate, so we don't have people pulling in the wrong direction of the wash.
The bypass exit, or?
Yes, the bypass exit would have a gate. The other ones would not.
And we've had a issue in the city with some of the car washes to where they'll, they'll stack so much, they'll stack out right onto the road. So do you have a procedure in place if that starts to happen, to where you close down, letting cars in temporarily? Because we don't, what we don't want is them, you know, stacking out on Palisades, and we have a spot where that happens.
Sure. Very familiar with the other washes in the city. They, their system isn't as efficient as ours. We can wash 120 cars per hour, where some of the other ones, where you have one car in a bay at a time, where the wash goes around them, they can only do, you know, 12 to 15 an hour. So this, we wouldn't ever really stack out, you know, to the street. Even in our busiest times of the year, which are 10 to 12 days a year, we've never stacked more than 37 at our other locations. It won't be an issue, because it's a very efficient system.
But if you did, you'd temporarily close it. You wouldn't stack out on that.
You could put a, we could put cones out there, so people wouldn't be able to enter anymore, but it'd be highly unlikely that happens.
Do we want to see more architecturally, Jeff?
Well, we'll, they'll have to come back with an architecture, but we could approve the site plan if I'm prepared.
And yes.
And I think with the, is it my understanding that we're setting aside the third condition?
Yeah, yes.
Because of the fact that that one lane would operate as a bypass if necessary? So three would, so we're talking about, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Can I ask a question? Extend, item condition number two, we talked about the access easement. Can, you indicated you were in conversations with the, with the owner of the property to extend that access easement. Have you made any further advances with that in terms of getting that obtained? Because right now, as it shows, it's in process, but the access easement doesn't extend all the way down.
Yes, we have been speaking with him. We think it might just be simpler, just to move the lane over those five feet or so, just so it isn't an issue. But he seems to be fine. He told us he's not going to hold anything up. I'm going to probably help participate in some of the paving of the driveway along there as well.
We would want to see that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're making it tough here.
We drew... Okay, never mind. We'll work it out with him, and we'll leave it as it is. He's told me he's not going to stand in the way, but we're just trying to keep it as simple as possible.
Did he indicate his name for the record?
Yeah. Could you indicate your name?
Chris Lockman, CSL Consulting.
I guess the only thing, if you were comfortable with those comments, we would ask then that language be added to the end of that condition, that extension of the access easement shall be obtained prior to issuance of the building permit. So if it's not obtained, it's not happening.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So...
And let me also make the observation. Condition number six, why don't we pull that out, and you can present that when you do the architectural review? Our section of the dumpster enclosure and vacuum equipment strain, did we see that at the same time that we do the architectural review?
Yeah, and I guess if I, if I could, I would add that the overhead canopy was supposed to provide an architectural detail, and that wasn't provided, so let's add that to it as well.
We're going to do a complete architectural review yet, okay?
Right.
So we've got seven conditions starting out, but we're going to set aside three, and we're going to set aside six. So that would be five conditions.
And we're going to add the two.
And add to two. Okay? And that, we could make a condition that they have to do the architectural review? Or is that just...
Well, you would be, you would be voting on final site plan here, and then request that the design review come back.
Right, okay.
Is that a motion?
A motion? I know.
Mr. Chairman.
Are we clear on the conditions?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Chairman, one more comment before we make a motion. As far as the architected that would be coming back, I agree with Mr. Varga, on that side elevation is really important. If you could, like your original submission, if you could give us option A, B, C, or something like that, just so that we have something more than just one to look at in case we have comments, that might help us throughput that as well.
Well, the, if you're okay with what is on the screen right now, that's the one we're going to do.
Right, but that's...
But even with, even with whatever you do on the side?
That side elevation.
It would be a full-blown elevation of all four sides.
Okay.
Adding the architectural elevation discussed.
Correct.
But what we were trying to determine is if this front concept was going to be acceptable before we go through the rest of it.
Right.
Sure. I think that's, that's fine.
Yeah, let's try to get the other ones.
Okay, so I think, I think we're in agreement that that's acceptable.
Do we have a second?
I'll second. Ed, please call the roll.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Berkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, guys, for holding us tonight as well. We appreciate it.
Director's report?
Nothing.
We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So we're adjourned.
Bill was watching.